Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Sustainability and Infrastructure Meeting of July 8th, 2020. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God,
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Cookie, could you please do the roll call?
Vice Chair Nunez. Eric Ronenski.
President.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Reyes.
Here.
Okay, thank you. We've got all commissioners in attendance. And just a reminder to everyone, due to the current physical distancing protocols in place, the city is encouraging the public to participate remotely. And there are two ways for the public to comment tonight. For people joining us by video, click on the Zoom meeting link found at the top of the meeting's agenda page and use the Raise Your Hand button to be called on when you would like to speak. The other way for people to join us is by phone and calling 408-638-0968. Once again, 408-638-0968. Enter conference ID number 812-4646-8478. Once again, 812-4646-8478. Press the pound key and then press star nine to raise your hand to be called on. And I also, before we move into the meeting, the formal part of the meeting, I want to really give a big thank you to staff. I know personally how much time and effort they have put in to make tonight's meeting possible and particularly to facilitate remote public participation. So once again, thank you Cookie and Carla. The first item on tonight's agenda is the consent calendar. There is one item to approve, that is the meeting of the commission's regular meeting of June 10th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
Removed.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. The meeting minutes have been approved. The next item on tonight's agenda is public comment. This section is for persons wishing to comment on an item not appearing on tonight's agenda. State law prevents the commission from acting on any item not on an agenda. However, comments are welcomed and the commission will take note of them and may consider them for inclusion into future commission meetings. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. Cookie, do we have any speaker slips for this section?
No, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. All right. With no hands raised, we will close out this agenda item and move into the next agenda item, which is the new business section. And in this section, there's two items, the Safe Streets Initiative Implementation and the 2019 Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association Annual Report. The presentation for the implementation of the Safe Streets Initiative will be done by Bethany Lopez, a senior traffic engineer for the city. The objective of this agenda item is for the public and the commission to receive an update and to provide feedback on this initiative to public work staff. A motion from the commission is not required for this agenda item. The presentation will be followed by questions from the commission. Then we will move to comments from the public. Once again, those comments can be made either by video or by phone. Speakers have three minutes to speak. I will inform each speaker when there is one minute and 30 seconds left to complete their comment. Once all public comments have been heard, I will bring the discussion back to the commission for final questions and comments. And once again, as noted, the motion from the commission is not required for this agenda item. So, on that note, Bethany?
Great, thank you for having me this evening. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Bethany Lopez. I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer for the city. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting about the Safe Streets Initiative Implementation that we've undergone through the COVID-19 pandemic. Let me see here. All right, so, um, so as we're all familiar with, the COVID-19 pandemic has resulted in a substantial amount of closures. However, we've still been provided the opportunity to recreate. As such, one of the things that we as a city wanted to undertake was something similar to something that other agencies have taken up, which is the Safe Streets Program. What this has provided is an opportunity to social distance during the pandemic. As noted here, this isn't, this hadn't been intended as a long-term implementation. It's provided to allow for social distancing to occur. We have worked with the city council through this, through this program to receive their feedback and we've been working with them since April. In this, we identified, or city council identified multifamily housing as a priority for the selection criteria for the various roadways. There were also other considerations that we included, such as parks, or how close these were to parks, whether there were alternate routes available, should certain roadways be closed or for traffic to be minimized on them. And also, we were trying to see where we can connect various Safe Streets locations. So again, the objective for this was to provide opportunities for residents to be able to recreate within their neighborhoods. So the locations shown on here are those that we presented to council and received feedback on. We initially had selected a single roadway in the Bay Meadows neighborhood and then various roadways around the city. We received feedback, excuse me, sorry. Following identification of these roadways, we reached out to neighborhood representatives to gather feedback about whether or not they were interested in pursuing this program. We received responses from all the neighborhoods except for the Shoreview neighborhood, which is location five. We did hear from the Hillsdale Bears for Neighborhood, San Mateo Village, and the North Shoreview neighborhood, and they indicated that they were not interested in the program at the time that we were proposing it. And some of the reasons for that were that there were some concerns about the prospect of closing roadways or even that they felt that they didn't need it in their particular community. North Shoreview indicated that they were interested in providing some additional signage on the Bay Trail as they'd already seen sort of an uptick of users out there. And we're hoping that we could provide some additional outreach to indicate social distancing etiquette. So shown here, after, after some further discussion with the Bay Meadows neighborhood, the Bay Meadows location was implemented first as a pilot project the week of April 27th. It's a little bit difficult to see on the map here, but the locations are listed there for, and they were 28th between West Pine and Ochoa, on West Pine from 20th to Derby and the Derby Coliseum use of Bays. The other locations were Fremont and on Monte Diablo, as shown in the previous one. And then you can see that location four were the Bay Trail signage. And all of these, the remainder of these were implemented the week of May 11th. So the city provided various outreach materials for each of the neighborhoods to send out to their residents. You can see that we provided location information and also we're showing some of the signage that was installed as part of this effort. So we provided the signage in the north central and central neighborhoods in both English and Spanish. And we provided, you'll see in the next slide, that some of these messages are placed on the street and then some of these were sent out via email. You can see here, this is what the implementations look like. The top left corner is one of the implementations, the Fremont location in the central neighborhood. The south, or excuse me, the bottom left corner is the West Pine closure. And we had made quite a few changes in the Bay Meadows neighborhood following their feedback. And so this was one of those changes. And then you can see on the right is the Bay Trail signage that we developed and installed along the Bay Trail at various locations. In general, I think we received some pretty positive feedback. We received some feedback via social media. We received direct feedback from the neighborhood representatives that we were working with, as well as various other emails. And you can see that in this photo, there's somebody using it, which is great. I think the degree to which people were using this varied by neighborhood. However, as mentioned, it was generally positive feedback. We did however, receive some fairly early feedback from city council indicating a desire to look at other locations that were, that had lower volumes. Following those, that feedback from city council, we began discussions with the neighborhoods about those alternate location possibilities. So we further, we received further council direction at the June 29th meeting to go ahead and remove the Fremont and Monte Diablo locations. There were some concerns about increasing volumes, increasing roadway volumes. And staff had some concerns about some signage that had been moved. It was found to be moved off of the roadway and also some of our signage was damaged. So citing staff resources and this increase in volume, the locations were picked up that week. We did maintain however, the southerly section of the Fremont location from 5th to 10th. We had heard positive feedback about that location from a number of people indicating that the volumes were, had stayed consistently low enough to be maintained at that location. And right now, we're looking at some alternative locations. So just to describe this for a second, the removed locations are shown in yellow. These are the Fremont and Monte Diablo locations. The maintained location is the one in green and the proposed alternatives are the one in blue. So right now, we're looking at two alternative locations in the north central neighborhood. And right now, we're considering Grant and then one of two segments on Clermont, so north of Poplar or south of Poplar. So regarding the next steps, I think the program is continuing to function as it was intended in providing the social distancing opportunities during the pandemic. We've continued to work with the neighborhood and will continue to work with the neighborhood to identify appropriate locations. We continue to receive their feedback. We are seeing and realizing the need to balance our resources with the benefits of the program. And one of the goals, I think, is to see where we might be able to align some of the bike master plan facilities with any of these closures that we have or the Safe Streets locations. And then, any feedback we receive tonight will be provided to city council when we discuss that with them in September. And that concludes my presentation. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Bethany. Okay, Commissioner, let's, questions that we may have, and I'll start with Commissioner Robbins.
No questions right now.
No questions, okay. Commissioner Nunez?
Thanks, Susan, and thank you, Bethany, for your presentation. It's really great to see the city being flexible to the needs of the community, especially during the pandemic. You know, for the agency that I work for, just monitoring social media, I saw there was definitely a need to, you know, provide more places for people to safely socially distance. And, you know, personally, when you're walking on a sidewalk too, you're noticing that people are kind of going into a street to safely socially distance. So I think that this Safe Streets Initiative is extremely important and I hope to see it continue into the future. Definitely understand the need to, you know, balance city resources. But I guess my first question is about the relative cost of the program. I recall one of our council members giving a presentation about this initiative and noting that the cost was somewhat low comparatively. And so I just wanted to see if that still holds true.
Yeah, I would say that the cost has remained low for the most part. The initial implementation was probably the most costly part of this as we had to obtain additional pieces of equipment to be able to deploy some of the equipment we've, I believe, we've purchased all of this. And so, and it's all equipment that we will be able to use in the future. However, I think where the cost has sort of jumped is the staff resources. And I think, again, that's still relatively low, but we are trying to manage that and just make sure that we're not spending too much of our staff resources maintaining this program.
If I could add that to that through the chair, and it's not just the cost of the staff resources, it's just, it's a matter of time. You know, there's a lot of things that traffic maintenance staff has to do and they're kind of a short staff group anyway, so just the extra time on a daily basis to go out there and reset signs. And that's one of the reasons we needed to pull that, those two segments as well.
Okay. And some of my other questions were related to, you know, the long-term implementation of this, you know, potentially beyond the pandemic and really acknowledging the letter that we received from the Bay Meadows Neighborhood Alliance Board. And so, I guess I'll, you know, save the rest for comments. But, you know, one of my questions was around whether we've considered long-term implementation and that was answered in the first slide, really. So, you know, really no other questions, but actually, one more is, it sounds like we're trying to align with the Bike Master Plan. Are there any opportunities that stand out to staff for this to align better with the Bike Master Plan?
Yeah, and that's one of the proposed locations, the proposed alternative locations. That wasn't our primary focus when we were looking at these locations in the beginning. However, as we're looking at alternative locations and following the feedback that we've received, I think we understand and we hear that there is a desire to see this maintained for a longer duration. And so that's where aligning with a lot of the plans, the master plans that we already have is one of the goals. So the Clermont location is one of those locations. I know 28th Avenue is one of those locations as well. And really, as I mentioned about the plans, the plans themselves have really taken the, have really done a lot of the outreach that would be necessary to implement something like this. Because this was such a short-term implementation, you know, we really want to make sure that outreach is done if we were to consider any sort of long-term implementation.
Sure, and hearing you, you know, say that the really initial big lift was around the beginning of the program and knowing that there's a need to balance staff time for this, you know, it really encourage, encourage the city and staff to really think about long-term implementation and potentially permanent for some of these locations. You know, especially, it sounds like there's been a lot of community support, especially in Bay Meadows for this. So as much as we can consider this into the future would be great.
So if I could maybe address that specifically because, you know, one of the things that's a little bit concerning is some of these streets are collector's streets. So actually, you know, higher volume of traffic is expected to be there. And on 28th Avenue, while it's a bike, scheduled to be a bike Boulevard in the Bike Master Plan, right? So it wouldn't look like it does today because, you know, we can expect through traffic because of it, it's being a collector's street. And with the imminent opening of 28th Avenue under the railroad tracks, you know, it's just going to open up to the west side of town as well. So while it wouldn't have signs such as we have there today, not a through road and things like that. There are other amenities. Once, once we have a chance to study what the, kind of the final outcome of traffic and speeds and so forth are, that the staff will look at and and create a kind of a laundry list of improvements that would create the Bike Boulevard as we've done in other locations.
Okay, thanks, Brad. That's helpful.
Commissioner Reyes?
Yeah, I'm, one of the things that I think is interesting here too is the increased sense of safety. That's something that I've been hearing from folks with regards to the Safe Streets. And it's safety not only if you're recreating, but just even crossing the street or for other cars that are going through there. So it has, I think, multiple dimensions. There have been news reports that, you know, driving behavior has been more erratic with fewer cars on the streets. I'm kind of curious, the sense of staff, if, if there's a sense that that has been true or not true. In general, are we seeing any issues with regards to driving behavior in the city?
You know, from, just from the information that I have, I haven't necessarily seen that. I know that we do, or we are monitoring the roadway volumes and roadway speeds at various locations to see what sort of trends there might be during this time. And we haven't seen a substantial increase in speed or anything like that, at least at the locations that we're monitoring. That's not to say that that's not necessarily the case for certain locations in the city. So, but at least from my experience, I haven't seen that.
Then separately, going to the message that we got from the Bay Meadows Neighborhood Alliance, there is a request here, actually two requests, one to continue these 28th Safe Streets Initiative indefinitely, and staff has spoken to this. So that, that sounds like that's, you know, what might be evaluated later. And then the request with regards to Franklin and Saratoga. And Franklin in particular has been a point of safety concern for some time in the neighborhood, particularly crossing the streets with vehicles clearly speeding. And as you know, there's been a fair amount of discussion of this previously. But it does seem like there might be an opportunity here if we had a lane closure to help reduce some of the speeds there, even though we don't have the traffic study and everything else. So can staff comment on the prospect for taking such a step? Since there is more pedestrian traffic, it's now, you know, with children pretty much on a daily basis, that remains a significant concern in that neighborhood.
So I'll take that question. First, on the, on 28th Avenue. Again, it wouldn't look like it does today. You know, it would become a bike Boulevard, so if we make the improvement. So this request for it to be indefinite, it would look different if it became that way. And there likely to be some gap when we return to normal. And then before we get other improvements done, right? So, and again, this does open up and it's been long planned that this would open up to the west side of El Camino. And the same, same goes for Franklin Parkway because it's actually 31st Street on the other side of El Camino. And so that will also open up. And being a four-lane roadway that leads directly to the freeway, we, we don't recommend any changes to that, to that roadway because we see, once, once that does open up, probably early this next year, that the volumes will increase on that roadway as it provides direct access and will relieve some of the congestion that we see on Hillsdale Avenue under normal conditions, which is not right now under the pandemic. The other concern with doing something on both Saratoga and Franklin Boulevard or the Parkway is we have a lot of construction in that area. In fact, we have a project that's going to start soon, which you all know, the Underground Floated Liberation System in the County Event Center. So those are really the truck routes. So utilizing those streets under conditions and, you know, narrowing them down when some, some of the construction will actually happen on the streets such as Saratoga would not be something that we would recommend or want to move forward with.
Just to follow up on that, so I certainly understand the construction need relates to Saratoga. But are we saying that we're also anticipating truck traffic on Franklin?
That, that's the case right now. That's one of the main truck routes into the, as the Wilson Maney developer utilizes for their projects. So that's one of the main truck routes right now, yes.
So it would seem though that some temporary street measures to, to address the safety concerns, again, particularly on Franklin, which gets a lot of children crossing there. And there's been a long-running issue, you know, on an interim basis through the course of this year might seem not that difficult to do?
So if I'm incorrect, and we've made some improvements there as far as the crossing goes, we put the RFB up at the crossing that was of concern. I myself haven't seen any, you know, complaints or concerns in a while on that street. So I don't know, Bethany, if you have seen other data. But once again, that street was, you know, a basically an arterial street, so a main roadway. So we're going to see, you know, higher speeds, more, more traffic volume. You know, people should stay alert and utilize the facilities that we put out there for their safety.
I particularly remain concerned about that curve. And I think that's the concern that many of the neighbors have. So people do come around there, there's no, there's no speed control there as we're aware. And it definitely is a safety issue. So certainly, you know, the additional signage at the corner helps some, but.
Raphael, this is, can I interrupt? Yeah, this is about the Safe Street Initiative and maybe some of this could be taken offline.
I understand. And there's, there's an overlap here because, because this could potentially be an avenue for addressing that concern as well.
Okay.
But that's fine, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. And I have a, I have a few questions here. So Bethany, when this program was initially envisioned, it, that is, it was in response to COVID, understand that. Is it to be, what we'll say finalized? Is there a definitive step such as the San Mateo County Health, Public Health Officer declaring that or stating that we are now out of shelter in place? How will this program wind down or will it wind down?
Yeah, I think that it will wind down as we continue to seek city council feedback on it. I think it was anticipated that, well, let me start over. We had wanted to start this while shelter in place was, was in place. However, I think that we realized at the time that we would be continuing this through some of the time while social distancing is still relevant. I'm not sure that we, we definitely didn't have an end date per se in mind. And I think, yeah, as I mentioned, I think it would definitely be dependent on city council's feedback.
Sure.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump into, we intend to go back to council in September to give them an update at a study session on this topic. Actually get some policy direction on that specific item as well as some others, so.
Right. So Brad, would you envision, you know, look, I mentioned this to people who live south of Hillsdale who were not, did not know about this program. And, you know, south of Hillsdale, we've got libraries, we've got the largest complex in the city with 753 units, churches, we've got county hospitals down here, libraries and schools and parks and people. And so, you know, when I had reached out to probably about a dozen people, nobody had heard about this, I understand that. But there's a lot of interest in having, for example, Hacienda be considered, Hacienda, that is the southern part of Hacienda, or possibly. possibly Winway or something along those lines. Could those streets also be considered? Or is this program not taking any more streets until policy until that meeting in September? Or may not even take any more streets for that matter?
Well, I'm how, yeah, right. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how I can answer that exactly. But I think I if you had some streets that you wanted staff to look at, I mean, we'd be happy to 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 get a initial opinion on on something like that. We probably wouldn't move forward with any installations without council approval. Whether or not we would do that prior to September, I'm not sure. Most likely not because there's very few council meetings between now and then anyway. But if there was a there was a strong desire, again, we relied on the HOAs, so that HOA didn't see a need for it. But of course, they didn't reach out to everyone either. And
Right.
Different discussions with different people, so.
Absolutely, yeah. No, and I understand that, right.
So we we did our best to try to to do what we could. And and so, I mean, like I said, I'd be happy to have staff take a, you know, quick look and see if something somewhere else might work.
Right. And I think and I think it's a great program. You know, I see, you know, I see people on on busy streets, collector streets, and they're walking and running. They're not on sidewalks, they're not on sidewalks because they want to dis everybody else is on sidewalks. They want to distance themselves. So you've got pedestrians, far more pedestrians on collector streets than you normally have. You have far more people biking, skateboards, scooters, the whole bit. And so it's basically what I see is 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 traffic is offloaded from the sidewalk onto the street. And 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 once again, it's in response to the distancing requirement. So so this program made perfect sense. And I think it's a great program. So let's see, because like I said, there's other parts of the city who I think would be very interested in being considered. And I think we'll just kind of leave it at that. If anybody else has any questions, otherwise we'll move off. We'll take some comments from the public here.
Chair Winski, before we move on to public comment, it sounds like there's some trouble with the broadcasting. And so anybody who's listening, it sounds like can access the meeting instead of through YouTube. They're not able to connect. So people are not able to connect on YouTube. So it sounds like we're asking people to access the meeting through the Zoom link on the agenda.
Oh, okay. So they can't view. They can't see the meeting through YouTube. So the only way for anyone to view the meeting is now through the Zoom link. Is that?
Correct.
Okay. Alrighty. Do I need to make, is there a need to make any more of a formal announcement than that? Okay. All right. Thank you, Jackie. I see with that, let's I see what I see a couple of hands up from the public here. We've got Alan and Adam. Alan. You've got, we have three minutes here. Alan? Alan, would you like to speak? Adam, would you like to speak? Okay.
Unmuted Cookie?
I don't even see them. I don't even show them.
Well, they're definitely on.
Adam has just unmuted himself. Adam?
Test.
Yes, we can hear you, Adam.
Excellent.
Okay, yes. So Adam, I'll give you when when there's one minute and 30 seconds left.
Thank you, Chair Winski. Thank you, Commission. Thank you, Cookie. Thank you, staff. I would like to specifically thank Brad, Bethany and Public Works and the city manager for this program. I agree with Chair Winski that I feel the more people learn about it, the more they like it and the more they want to see more of it. And I I'm really glad that the city went ahead with this program, given how COVID-19 related restrictions have persisted through the summer so far and look to be persisting beyond. So I'm, you know, whereas at the beginning, perhaps we weren't sure how long we'd want them. It's it's been helpful and I'd like to see more, more, more more presence, more more on the city website. You know, when you when you Google Redwood City Safe Streets, when you Google Oakland Safe Streets, you go right to the city pages with plenty of FAQs, opportunities for input and feedback. I'd love to see something like that on the city of San Mateo page, too. The point brought up by many commissioners, it'd be great to have a little more outreach to let people know that this program is happening. And I think it would be great. I agree with Chair Winski. I think it would be great to ask the other neighborhoods again if they'd like to do this again. Because earlier, maybe we were thinking of going back to normal and now we may be going on longer than we thought. So I think it's worth another shot. Let's continue pushing this. Let's be proactive. Let's make sure that the signage is in the streets more like Redwood City and Oakland as opposed to what ended up happening in North Central on in the Phase One. I'm really looking forward to Phase Two and and trying to to make sure that we're asking cars to slow down and choose other streets. I hope we're not necessarily hoping to pull the signs as soon as cars start picking up. The whole point is to get cars to, you know, people out of their cars. It's been, it's more important now than it probably ever has been. I'm thinking of the Silicon Valley Bicycle Coalition letter that was sent in June to the city and the commission. You know, in this period.
One minute, Adam. I'm sorry.
Yep, no problem. Let's have cars slow down and prioritize active transportation. It's an access issue. It's an equity issue. It's an environmental issue. I'd also like to see about more experimentation with street slowing enclosures. We talked about the Bay Meadow streets. You know, there may be other opportunities as well. Let's just keep pushing forward on this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matledge? I see your hand is up, but you need to unmute yourself or call in.
I assume the unmuting function for participants is the same lower left corner to mute and unmute.
That is correct. I I actually don't see him listed. Okay, he just, yeah, he just pulled down his hand. Okay. Would anyone else, any anyone else in the public like to speak? Okay. Alrighty. I'll bring this back. We'll bring this 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 discussion back to the commission for any final comments. Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, I think it's a great program. And actually, my sense is that staff has been interacting with council and the public, doing a great job. There is a balance that has to happen. Notwithstanding COVID, there are drivers out there, people need to get through. When you shut down one street, it's whack a mole, right? Cars end up on other streets and people complain about it. So I think it's, from what I can tell, it's been it's it's been very well done with a lot of being very nimble and very flexible, and I appreciate that. And you know, but the only addition I have would be what others have said, a little more outreach, putting something on the city webpage a little more might be useful for those people who are looking to see where they can wander more instead of drive. But otherwise, great stuff. I'm very happy with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Nunes?
Yes, also agreeing with what Commissioner Robbins said, you know, I think there's definitely a balance to strike. You know, this is definitely a great program. I'd love to see it continue, especially since, you know, it sounds looks like COVID-19 is not going away anytime soon. So definitely would also love to see this on the city website with opportunities to to give, you know, feedback on other areas that this can be implemented. And then also the idea of looping back around with neighborhood representatives. You know, if that was a long, long time ago, checking to see if there's interest in participating in this program. Maybe they maybe folks have tried it in other areas of the city. So I think that's an important step. And thank you so much for your work on this.
Commissioner Reyes?
I have no further comment, but thank you to staff for working on this.
Yep. And yeah, once again, great program. And I could see where it would have value in terms of slowing cars down, particularly as I've mentioned, I see a lot of pedestrians, runners, bikers, skateboarders on the streets in response to the distancing. You know, and I think Commissioner Robbins brought up a very interesting point that I know staff knows all too well, being involved in traffic. You close one one street, you're just moving that load on to somebody else. So all of that needs to be balanced. But all in all, good program and and look forward to possibly some minor expansions. But thank you. And and on that note, Bethany, thank you for your time and interest in receiving feedback from the public and the commission. So have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, everyone, we're gonna move to the second item, the second agenda item under the new business section. And that is the 2019 Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association Annual Report. This presentation will be made by Sue Ellen Atkinson, who's our principal transportation planner for the city, and Paul Krupa of Krupa Consulting. This item's objective is for the public and the commission to receive an update and provide feedback on the 2019 report. In addition, the commission is asked to make a motion to recommend to city council the acceptance of this report. The presentation will be followed by questions from the commission, and then we will move to comments from the public made by video or phone. Once again, individual speakers have three minutes to speak. I will inform speakers when there's one minute and 30 seconds left to complete their comment. Once all public comments are heard, I will bring the discussion back to the commission for final questions and comments. And a motion for the commission, as noted, is required for this item. So on that note, Sue Ellen?
Hi, good evening, Chair Winski and Commissioners. Just to confirm that you can see the presentation on your screen?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. And again, I'm Sue Ellen Atkinson. I'm the principal transportation planner with Public Works. And I have with me tonight Paul Krupka, who is the transportation consultant for the Rail Corridor Transportation Management Association, or TMA. And with that, I will transition this over to Paul to present tonight's report.
Thank you, Sue Ellen. I appreciate this very much. Good evening, Chair Winski and the members of the commission. I'm Paul Krupka, sole proprietor of Krupa Consulting and the author of the report we're discussing. I wish you peace and good health. I'm pleased to give you an overview of the annual report and look forward to your feedback. Looking at the this particular screen, I want to first talk with a start with a overview of the TMA, talk us short bit about project status and then talk about the really the meat of the work, which is the trip generation work, and then do a quick summary. Then I'll turn it back to Sue Ellen. Next slide, please. The TMA essentially was created as a part of the Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan, or the Corridor Plan, as we call it. The the plan itself created at the Transit Oriented Development Guidance. It provided, it it created a transportation demand management program. And it also created the Transportation Management Association, alphabet soup here. The TMA membership is required for all development within the Transit Oriented Development, or TOD. It's encouraged for development within the Corridor Plan area and available to users outside. Its functions are really the oversight, marketing and coordination of the TDM program. And as we're talking about tonight, the conduct and documentation of annual trip generation monitoring counts. Next slide, please. With respect to trip generation of the TMA, sorry, respected project status, excuse me, jumped ahead. A good deal of development occurred in 2019. The latest completed project in 2019 was the Franklin Templeton Campus Expansion. Future growth potential is high based upon construction underway, such as at Station Park Green and Bay Meadows Phase Two. And project approvals in place as well as applications under review. Next slide, please. The trip generation counts are essentially based on actual driveway counts first were conducted in October 2019 at these facilities or these these projects. And the the numbers are pretty pretty clear, but generally, the short term goal is represented as the trip threshold. And the 2019 is the actual count that was that was completed in October. Generally speaking, the all the projects are technically below their trip threshold or PM peak hour counts. The Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware Combination Project was essentially at its threshold. Otherwise, projects appear to have some room to grow, if you will. Next slide, please. Now to the fun part. They say, what is this stuff on this on the screen here? Anyway, full monitoring was done in 2019 as required by the Bay Meadows Phase Two conditions of approval. This exhibit shows the Bay Meadows Phase Two area. You see a little light blue line there along with certain what we call gateways, one, two, four and six, and the red lines indicate a typical travel pass through the the study area. Generally, trip generation is essentially the total vehicles arriving and departing the area, less total vehicles that travel through the area. Counts are conducted at boundary or cordon points to identify and count existing entering and leaving trips. Travel time surveys are done to establish typical drive times to travel through the area. The data are then summarized to determine trips entering, leaving and traveling through the area. Looking at the chart here, that the counts were done at actually six cordon locations or gateways, we called it in the report. And those are noted, one, two, four and six. They're also done at gateways three and five, which are at East 28th at Delaware and 31st at Delaware or Franklin at Delaware, which are which are closed to to traffic moving through and across the Caltrain path or Caltrain corridor. So the counts were done at these these locations by a vendor that was contracted by the TMA. The the traffic count experts, if you will, used a very sophisticated camera system to record partial license plates of each of the vehicles as well as time, time that those vehicles entered or left the corridor at the particular points. Travel time surveys were done by me, me getting in my car and traveling these four paths for corridor sets of port corridor pass, I should say, on a on a couple of afternoons in February. And what I did was simply have a stopwatch and counted the time to go from one stoplight to the next stoplight or through the next stoplight or through the particular point in in question. The the I next simply compared the counts that were done by the vendor with my travel times to determine how many how many trips traveled through the corridor within a certain time, within the time of the study. This process allowed me to determine that track that through trips represented approximately 29% of PM peak period trips. Next slide, please. The the sum of this work is shown here. The the estimated PM peak period traffic was 3,774 trips, and that's PM peak period between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. And I determined the PM peak hour ratio or or share of that traffic by simply looking and counting the log of trap trips entering and leaving by time and came out with an estimate that 4:45 PM to 5:45 PM was the peak period. estimate that 4:45 PM to 5:45 PM was the peak period, and 56% of the total traffic entering and leaving occurred during that period, and did the math, and came down with 2,113 total PM peak hour trips. That number, to put it in context, is, is compared then to the maximum trip threshold allowed in the conditions of approval, which was 3,083 trips. So roughly, nearly 70% of, of the threshold is being, is being used, if you will, or the PM peak hour trips represented about 70% of the, of the total threshold. Seems very reasonable to me, especially given the, given the project development status and expected growth. Next slide, please. In, in summary, as I mentioned earlier, lots of development in, in 2019 with a good deal of a potential growth expected. All the TMA projects were below the short-term thresholds. The Delaware Pacific and 2000 project was pretty much at its threshold. And finally, the Bay Meadows Phase Two full monitoring was done this time for the first time, and the evidence indicates that it would be done in the next, next years of counts. So I think that does it for me. Back to Sue Ellen.
All right, thanks, Paul. So in prior years, you've seen city staff conducting the analysis and writing the report and doing the presentation to the commission. This year is the first year where the TMA took on the role of hiring their own consultant for data collection and for transportation analysis, and put together the annual report on their own. So this year, staff simply reviewed the report and approved of the contents and recommend to the commission that you consider the contents of the report through this update on the 2019 Rail Corridor TMA Annual Report, and that the commission makes a motion to recommend city council acceptance of the report. And that concludes the presentation at hand. Paul will remain available for any questions, and I will be available as well. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Paul and Sue Ellen. Let's open up with some questions from the commission, then we'll move to the public. Commissioner Reyes.
Just one quick question. Sorry if I missed it, but I didn't catch when this analysis was done.
You said when the analysis was done?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the, the actual counts were done in October of 2019. I did the analysis starting in February for the TMA and completed the analysis into the report in two stages.
Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Nunes.
Paul and Sue Ellen, for, for your presentation this evening. One quick question for me is that, given that Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware are essentially at trip thresholds this year, does that mean that they need to implement any additional TDM strategies going into next year?
I can address that if that's okay, Paul. In 2017, those combined projects, they share a driveway, so they're counted as one project. And in 2017, those projects exceeded their trip thresholds by about 20, 20 trips in the PM peak hour. During that, following that, they were required to put additional TDM measures in place. The 2018 counts were essentially disqualified because they were taken during some extenuating circumstances. They are one trip below their trip threshold, so at this point, they're not required to do any additional TDM measures because they have not exceeded that threshold. But they are aware of where they stand with regards to the trip threshold.
Sure. And that raises another question for me, Sue Ellen, is that, you know, they were not in compliance in 2017, and then, you know, 2018, the data was, you know, not, it wasn't used. So given, so if next year, if they were not in compliance, I know that there's kind of a one, what happens the first year you're not in compliance goes to the commission level, and the second year, it goes to the council level. Is that consecutive years? You know, for example, next year, would that come back to the commission, or would it go to council, given that it's the second year that they're compliant?
That's a great question. My understanding is that it's consecutive years, but we can go back and review the conditions of approval for that project and find out what specifically was included in there, and we'll be sure to do that. I want to mention that they did reduce the number of trips by about 20 during the peak hour, so I think they should receive some commendation for doing so, but I agree that we do need to look into the conditions and see what we could expect in coming years.
Definitely. I guess we can cross that bridge when we get there. Great, that's all the questions that I, sorry, last one. How are the counts being done this year? Are there any kind of impacts from the 25th Avenue Great Separation Project to the potential counts that are happening towards the end of this year? Or will that have been wrapped up?
Do you want to cover that, Sue Ellen?
Sure, I just want to confirm you're talking about the counts that'll happen for the 2020 annual report. We have asked the TMA to make recommendation as to what their strategy would be with regards to the 2020 annual report. Typically, the counts are taken in October. We do have the Hillsdale Caltrain Station closed at this time, and we also have the current COVID-19 pandemic ongoing, and we don't know when or if normal traffic conditions will return. So we've started that discussion with the TMA, and we've asked them to present options to the city for consideration for how to collect the data and write that report. So we'll be able to provide an update soon on that.
Great, thanks so much. And it's, it's great that you're kind of getting ahead of it. So thanks for your presentation and for your answers to the questions.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for always great presentation. And Jackie Stolson, I thunder really. The only question I tend to have on this, and we've gone, Sue Ellen, you and I, we've talked about this over the years, is a, you know, what teeth do we have? Are there real consequences when these folks are bumping up on the thresholds? And, you know, some TDM measures are nice, but is there any real bite to the developer or the HOA at this point, as a successor to the developer, when they just blow through them, if they do? I think.
We do, that's it, that's another great question. We do, we require that they come to the commission and present their plan for additional TDM measures. If those are not effective, then they are required to go to council, and council may impose additional TDM measures. So at that point, it's not the project's decision of what TDM measures are implemented, it could be something that is, that they're told to do by the council. But in terms of fines or certain monetary consequences or something like that, we don't have that at this time.
Have we ever, have we ever gotten to the council? I don't think so, have we? On anybody?
Not to my knowledge.
My dear. Okay. Anyway, well, I appreciate it, and we'll, you know, hopefully gentle persuasion will equate to compliance, and that's all we need. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you there. I just have a couple of questions here, just needing to understand, because many of them have actually been answered already, but the report talks about short-term goals and defines them that they are based on the varying statuses, varying status of the completed TMA projects. And, and granted, the TMA is not fully built out yet, so is this the reason why we, we focus on the short-term thresholds?
Correct. All of the projects at this point are still required to be meeting their short, short-term thresholds. There are some, it does vary by conditions of approval for, for the individual projects. So there are some projects where the long-term threshold kicks in at full buildout of the Rail Corridor TOD area. There are some where that kicks in particularly, I believe for Bay Meadows, when the Great Separation Projects are completed, which is actually in the short term for, for us right now. So there are various points at which those projects will be required to go for the long-term threshold, but none of them are there yet.
Right, yeah. And, and so what I hear you saying, it's far more fluid, that is, than I envisioned. Really, that's what I see, because my, looking at the, the packet for the meeting and defining long, long-term goals based on full buildout, and it sounds like it's not all the neighborhoods within the corridor. It could be, that particular project could be full, it could be completed, and once completed, then it, does it move to long-term goals and off of short-term goals?
Not certain if there are any existing conditions of approval with that specification. That's one that we're considering for the future. There are, there are some where the TMA would determine when the long-term threshold would be in place. As I said, it, it varies between projects, and we, we really need to look at all of the conditions of approval to determine when that point is.
Right. So could a project have, so is a project either in, either they're being measured by short-term or long-term? Is it an or situation or an and situation?
It would be an or. The short-term trip thresholds are lower. For many, it's the minimum 25% trip reduction threshold for the, the Rail Corridor TOD Plan Area. The long-term thresholds are the more strict thresholds, so that's getting up to the 30 to 40%.
Right.
Range.
Right.
When they really need to tighten down and offer more programs if needed in order to make those thresholds.
Right. And so it's really the board that determines when a particular project transitions from the short, short to the long term.
For some, unless it's in the conditions of approval, that it's contingent on other situations.
Okay, all right. So it could be conditions of approval, outlining, outlining what the criteria would be, it could be the board, but somehow, everybody will eventually move to long term, eventually, I think is, is where this, where this will all go. Okay. All right, I think that's really the only question I had. I, I thought what was interesting, I'll share with you, is figure two on the summary that was given out on the packet, and that's the Hillsdale Station area, which goes all the way down to 36 South, and it looks like that change was made back in 2011. But yeah, the 36th Avenue is its southernmost border, yet we're not getting any data from that area. I'm assuming we're not because it's, it's, it's comprised of apartment complexes that were built in the 50s. It's not new development.
And the boundary that goes to that southern extent is the Hillsdale.
Stations, yeah.
Station Plan Area, Station Area Plan Boundary, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not required to have the same type of monitoring that the Rail Corridor Plan Area is required to have.
Right.
That's the difference in the, in the data that's collected.
Right. And I, I don't think they're required to have any data collected. Unless, and let me put this out here, if, if a new complex was built down on, and, and there was discussion of this, a big complex being built on 36th and El Camino, I guess at that point, I guess if it's technically in the area, they could be required to come up with a TMA, you know, their own metrics on reducing trips and et cetera.
We do generally require TDM plans for all projects within the city, not just within the Rail Corridor area. That project location would be outside of the Rail Corridor area, so it would not be part of. Unless they opt.
Unless they opted in, okay.
But with regard to the TDM plan that would be approved for that project, we would have monitoring letter that is required each year.
Right, so they would have their own TDM, and it wouldn't be this formal rail corridor that we have to review every month, every year and, and make a recommendation. Okay, thank you, that helps me, that helps out a lot. Okay, very good. I, let's go, let's see, let's look and see what the public has to say. And I see Mr. Ford with his hands up. Mr. Ford, would you like to? Can you unmute yourself? And you'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know when there's a minute and 30 seconds left to complete your comments, so please.
Thank you, Chair Rowinsky. My name's John Ford. I'm the executive director at Commute.org. We serve as the managing organization for the TMA, and I would like to start just by saying thank you to city staffs, specifically Sue Ellen and Ryan, for helping in the transition this year from that city-generated report to the report that the TMA put together. I'd also like to thank Paul Krupka for putting, doing all the analysis. He didn't mention it, but Paul is a San Mateo resident, so TMA was happy to bring him on to help in this process. So again, it was the transition year. We think it came out really well, the work was done very collaboratively, and that we really appreciate it. Secondly, I'd like to just kind of reiterate the fact that these are project-based compliance requirements, so each of the development agreements that each of these projects have and trip thresholds are specific to those projects. The TMA tries to do, pull that together and to do work that might help all of the projects, but ultimately, it's the individual projects and the developers that are responsible for compliance in a particular project. And that, yes, we have a lot of work to do to determine how we're going to be collecting counts this coming year. We want to make sure that it's, it's meaningful, it's accurate. The board has, has, understands the complexity of it in this particular year, and they want to do what's right for their own purposes for collecting the data, but also make sure that the city gets data that's relevant. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay. And thank you for your comments. Mr. At, Adam? Adam, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. Again, commissioner and staff, I'll start by mentioning that I did get a note from Mr. Alan Matlich, who was having Zoom issues. He said he wanted to let the commission know he'd like to see Monte Diablo incorporated into the bike plan if there aren't already plans to do that. That was one of the messages he meant to relay in the last item. He may send you a note later as well. But anyway, on this item, I, this report has left me with a lot of questions on our past, present, and future related to these TMA reports. Has this TMA met at all this year in 2020? When's the next meeting? And I was glad to see Mr. Ford on the call. It, it sounds as if maybe Commute.org is able to continue supporting the TMA beyond maybe the July 1st cutoff that I thought I saw in this 2019 report. Is that the case? Or if not, what's, you know, the TMA's admin situation now that, you know, beyond the July 1st? What does it mean to have a TMA with no TDM services or programs funded? Is that, you know, is, does that mean the developments are on their own and need to come up with their own TDM measures right now because we haven't come up with something that seems to work for everybody? So it seems like a curious phrase that I'm not sure about. When I think about Delaware and Pacific and 2000 Delaware, you know, dropping trips and getting back sort of under the threshold or right on it, I'm wondering what has changed in their TDM proposals? What's working? They proposed to this commission in 2018 a number of things, like a transit screen and promoting a Go app, the STAR program from Commute.org, but they also mentioned things like working more with Lime, which we no longer have in terms of bike share. Was looking forward to advances through Rapid ECR, which is not currently running. So I, you know, I'm, I'm just curious to see if there are some takeaways that other developments could maybe benefit from. What, what has Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware learned? What's working for them? That would be great to know. Bay Meadows Phase Two has changed twice in the last couple of years to significantly increase office space. Is, is that going to impact anything as we come into this reporting? And, you know, just as was mentioned a little bit, I'm, I'm curious about what this next year report for 2020 is, is going to look like in this COVID era. What's the new baseline going to be? You know, can that be, can we, can we think of ways to adapt? Sure. You know, we, we may have a, some of the transit that we've been, you know, leveraging for some of this, you know, these reductions in trips may be in, in trouble. We know Caltrain funding. We know Caltrain funding and others are at issue, and we mentioned the ECR. So, you know, are there opportunities for innovation to respond to some of these new challenges we're going to deal with? There's teleworking and stuff, it's going to be a totally different situation. Is it things like open-air shuttles that can be considered as, as we get forward to the end of this year and next year? Looking forward to more discussion on this, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Let's bring this back to the commission for any additional comment. I think Adam brought up some, some interesting points there. Sue Ellen, do any of them catch your attention and you would like to address? Paul?
I, I would offer that, I bet you John's, John's got his hand up, he probably wants to comment. But I would offer that indeed, Adam Lorraine's comments were all very good comments, I think. And they, they point to someone who's very active and involved and concerned about the, the corridor. And which is, which is what you need, what we need, what Sue Ellen needs and what John needs and the TMA board need to hear. It is an evolutionary project process. And in this case, you know, we, we went through the motions of doing the data collection and getting and reporting the counts. And then doing the special, special analysis of Bay Meadows Phase 2 this year. So we, we, we grow and we experiment and we change according to the, the TDM plan, the program. So it's good to get those kind of comments.
I can try to capture a couple. In terms of what worked at the Delaware Pacific and 2000 Delaware project, we can reach out and find out where they had the most success. I know that they, they did implement transit screen and they were looking at doing additional events. I'm looking at John, I think commute.org was actually involved in promoting those events and, and working with residents there. So we can certainly look into that for additional information. The TMA has met in 2020. I don't have the dates offhand, but they are continuing to meet via Zoom. And I'm sharing, I believe that they've had two Zoom board meetings this year. And I think that John had his hand raised if he had, if we're able to have him share information there.
Sure. I, I would be glad to go back to John. John, John Ford, would you like to speak? And we're responding to some of the points that Adam's brought up?
Sure, yeah, great questions and, and good comments from everybody so far. So first of all, commute.org has decided to, we're extending our, our relationship with TMA for another year. So they're stuck with us at least through June 30th of 2021. There's a lot of transition going on. And so we thought that was important. We've been with them for a very long time. Make sure that we see them through a good transition when they can go on and really kind of stand alone. But we'll let them have another year to do that. We have met as a board, the board met twice this year so far. It's a good board, it's active. In terms of what worked at the Delaware Pacific project, it's what Sue Ellen talked about. We did do a lot of events with them. So Adam, to Adam's question about not spending dollars from the TMA, the individual projects have been spending money on their own. They've also been taking advantage of the commute.org programs and the training that we offer and the consulting that we offer at no cost. So the TMA itself is not more in the cost, but the individual projects have provided the services. So we did bike training out of those facilities. We also did some city events with the police department out of those locations as well to encourage people to do more biking and walking to locations. That was very useful. Hopefully those answered your questions and thanks again for the great, the great feedback.
Okay, thank you, John. Questions from Commissioner Reyes, comments, any final comments, questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Nunes?
I'm trying to find my own button. I think that the points that were raised, that the Adam raised are, are good ones as well. And it would be great to know and find out what measures did work for 2000 Delaware and 2000 Delaware. To be able to share that, it sounds like, you know, like maybe something that the board discusses. But, you know, I think it would be helpful for me at least, and potentially other commission colleagues to, to understand what those were. When, you know, this comes back to us in the future or, you know, look at different scenarios like this. And so that's been on the comment. And other than that, you know, it really looks like the trip production strategies that have been outlined are working well for nearly all the projects and basically all the projects in the area. And so I will for sure be interested in recommending this to council.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Robbins?
No, at the right time, I have nothing further other than to recommend, I will move recommendation of the, of the report to council for acceptance.
Okay. Can we do that? I just have a couple more questions and then let's, let's take a motion on that, but thank you. Adam mentioned that starting on July 1, there would be no administration of TMA. Did I, I wasn't quite sure, does any, Sue Ellen, can you help me out here?
Sure, that was what John spoke to just before, that, that they've extended the commute.org oversight of the TMA for another year. So they, that John will be, continue to be the executive director until June 30th, 2021. They're under full leadership.
Okay. And, and I guess this year, then, then the TMA will then determine who will then lead them. That is, who will succeed commute.org is what it sounds like. This year will be a, a transition year from commute.org into something else. It sounds like.
That would be my understanding as well.
Right, okay, all righty. Okay. Well, thank you, the public, thanks, commission. Let's move on. I'm not hearing, what I'm, what I'm hearing is an interest for, to raise a motion to recommend city council acceptance of this report. Is that true? Someone like to make a motion?
I so move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. On that, let us vote. I.
I think we have a roll call?
Yep. Yep. Commissioner, Vice Chair Nunes?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
Commissioner Robbins?
Aye.
And Chair Rowinsky?
Aye.
It's 4-0. Motion. Great, okay. And once again, thank you, everyone, for your questions. And thank you, Sue Ellen and Paul, for your, for your time to speak to us this evening, so. We appreciate it. Okay. Anyway, we're going to be wrapping up this evening's, our, our meeting. The final item on tonight's agenda is reports and announcements. Does anyone have any reports or announcements? I have some questions in terms of some items that are what we call on our crystal ball or to be discussed sometime in the future. But anybody have any reports or announcements that they would like to make? Staff, commissioners?
Yeah, Chair Rowinsky, Brad Underwood, Public Works Director. So I have to update you on what's coming forward to your meetings in the future. For August, we don't have anything scheduled, which is typical with this commission. So we only take a break in August and we don't have anything pressing that we would need to bring forward to you. In September, as you know, with the bike and master, bike and master plan, we're charged with coming back to you a few times a year so that you give you an update on the bike and master plan. We intend to include the pedestrian master plan in that update as well. So we'll bring those before you in September. And then we've been looking at some funding needs we have in the department for stormwater. As stormwater is really not funded with any other funding other than general fund. And of course, there's a limited supply, so we don't get much funding for our stormwater activities. So we've undertaken a funding analysis, so we intend to bring that before you for, for your thoughts and input in September as well.
Okay. Well, that should be a full agenda. And an interesting one. Anyone else reports announcements? We've got a, we've got a look into what September's agenda is going to be. I do have a couple of questions here, Brad. The Sugarloaf N-Tap that we listened to earlier this year? And what's going to incorporate analysis of Laurelwood? Do we have a sense of when that might come back on the docket?
Did Bethany leave us?
Oh, I think she did.
I don't see her. Yeah, we've had a discussion about that recently because there's some things we can move forward with out of that study. But there were some other concerns, as you well know, that were expressed by residents of an adjacent area. That we want to try to meld the two together. Obviously, since we talked about this, COVID has hit, so we're a little bit challenged in getting that work done. But, but staff, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, I believe, they're going to look to try to generate some kind of, you know, a Zoom meeting or something that we can actually put out to the, to both communities and, and reach out to them to see if they have any interest in commenting on what we're doing. And then if there's any adjustments that need to be made. So it's, it's going to be a little while before we're able to bring that back to the commission.
Yeah, because that one, I think, was January, February, then we went to COVID in mid-March, right? So it kind of puts some of the brakes on. I just got a couple of emails on it and the reason I wanted to bring it up.
Yeah.
Just in terms of when we may hear that. Another one, though, is, you know, we kind, is PW's citywide maintenance plan in terms of sign replacements, faded signs, crosswalks. I see some of the work being done across, you know, through the city. I did notice a nice crosswalk painted in on 25th. But I know that there is, you know, there is a citywide plan, I hope, being implemented or being designed. And I was wondering when we might hear something about that. But, you know, once again, this is the stuff people see, it's not, it's, you know, it's, it's actually quite visible. It's not, you know, it's not firecracker type of work. It's not very sexy, but it is visible. It's important, too. And I'll share with you, I have somebody who got a ticket who didn't realize the curb was so faded. They had thought that it wasn't a red curb. It ended up to be a red curb and they were ticketed. So, you know, I'm just wondering what the, and, and this is something I brought up several, oh, back probably early fall of 2019, when we might hear something about this as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'll circle back with staff. It, it's not something we couldn't bring to you this fall. I'm sure we could, we could do that, so I'll have them begin to work on that.
Sure, okay, great, thank you. With that, if there's no other questions or comments, we're going to adjourn this meeting. And it looks like the next meeting for the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission will take place on Wednesday, September 12th. So once again, thanks to the public, to staff, to the commissioners for your time. Be safe and be well. Thank you.
Thank you all.